2022 Anderson Township Zoning Commission Meeting to Order. If the Secretary could please call roll.
Mr. Guyer? Mr. Dungus?
Here.
Mr. Eliff?
Here.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Here.
Thank you, Sarah. Before we approve tonight's agenda, any changes that you know of, Paul?
No, we have no changes to the agenda tonight.
Accept a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented, the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Eliff.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
And we've also got the meeting minutes from the June 27th meeting in front of us tonight. It looks like we do have quorum to approve these, I think.
I'm gonna have to abstain from that, though, because one of the cases I had to sit out.
Okay, then we may not actually.
We can postpone that until next month.
Will do.
Okay, the first and final case on the agenda tonight is a quasi judicial hearing to remove a planned unit development. And the case number is 12022 PUD Views of Coldstream. Before we get started, I do have some procedures to outline real quick, so please do bear with me. As I outline these, the commission will follow in hearing in deciding this matter. Under the zoning resolution, our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi judicial proceeding, the commission will only receive evidence as to whether the applicant meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not and are not able to hear opinions, only facts relating to compliance with these standards and criteria. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in. All witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application. The applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witnesses who testified before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case through its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify, one at a time, after being recognized by the chair. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the chair. If anyone in opposition is represented by an attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As stated previously, all persons wishing to testify, whether for or against the application, may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium, after being recognized, speak into the microphone, and state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to four minutes unless a commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimony is to be directed to the commission only. No comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new, non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show support of previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now, will all persons who may give testimony this evening, please stand, raise your right hand, and swear or affirm? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you very much. At this point, staff, would you please present your summary of the case?
Thank you. The applicant is Richard Palo Esquire on behalf of Coldstream Estates Development LLC, who is the property owner. The location is off of Ayers Road, and it's a portion of Book 500, page 183, and parcel 14. The request is to remove a planned unit development, a PUD, that approved a single-family subdivision on a private drive, which included, it was gated, and it had 20% open space. So the applicant would like to return to the original AA zoning, single-family zoning. Again, the applicant's proposing seven single-family lots ranging in size from 1.6 acres to 10 acres. This would be a standard subdivision with a public street, sidewalks on both sides, and subject to the Hamilton County subdivision regulations. So this has a little bit of a history, so bear with me. In early 2021, the concept plan for the seven-lot subdivision was approved by Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission. After that approval, the concept approval, the applicant requested a PUD in order to install a private road with a gate. At the January 2022 public hearing, the applicant requested continuation before the case was heard. They modified their plans to address them, the recommendations of staff. The zoning commission approved the PUD at their February 2022 meeting with one condition. Then this went from the zoning commission's approval of the PUD to Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission's approved at the subdivision level on April of 2022. Then in June of 2022, the applicant applied for a major adjustment to the PUD, and then ultimately withdrew that application before it was heard by the zoning commission. So now in July, the application is to completely remove the PUD and just go back to straight zoning. This is the site in question. The proposed subdivision would come off of this corner of Ayers into this general vicinity of this parcel. The parcel, or the property to the north was recently approved as a PUD, and that is proposed to be the carriages at Coldstream. And then this subdivision here, the current name is the Views of Coldstream. The road was already put in after the approval of the original subdivision last year, so this is the updated aerial, the 2022 aerial with the updated road that's already been installed. And the lots are loaded on the south side of the new street. This is the topography map that had the old aerial, but this was where the original, the Williams Estate home was. And so the road pretty much follows the same drive back to that area, and the homes would be constructed in the flatter portion of the site. As you can see, there's a steep decrease in grade down to Kellogg and 52. There's also a decrease in grade down to Asbury Road. So this is the proposed subdivision. Again, this is public street, cul-de-sac, seven lots, ranging in size from about 1.6 acres to over 10 acres. The detention basin has already been installed, and it's proposed on Lot 7. And then these lots, some of them do have fringed out on old Kellogg Rightofway. These are the site photos that were recently taken in June. This is looking, I guess you could kind of say, north toward downtown. And that's looking in the other direction, toward the south along the river. So the applicant has stated they are requesting the removal of the PUD just because of some of the complexities and difficulties of the private street and the gate, not only with safety, public safety services, but also with water service. And it's created quite the challenge to have the private street and the public gate. So because of this, they're reverting back to just the normal straight zoning district. So because of that, once the PUD, if the PUD is approved to be removed, there will be the no clearing limits, the open space. If there is an HOA, that will not be regulated by a zoning commission decision or the PUD. These would all be private. These were some of the findings that were considered during the original PUD request. The Township Comprehensive Plan, the People and Housing Chapter, as well as the Quality of Life Chapter. Hillside stability and stormwater runoff were a major concern during the initial PUD hearing. If the PUD is removed, these items, and they would have been reviewed through the Hamilton County subdivision regulations before, but they will also still be regulated and need to meet the subdivision regulations through Hamilton County. Again, these were some of the findings that were, the zoning commission based their decision on approving the PUD, but a landscaping plan is not required for a straight subdivision. So with the request of removal of the PUD, the following items, which are part of the original application, would no longer be required: a landscaping plan, tree clearing limits, and preserved open space area. The proposed application does appear to be consistent with the original zoning of AA, which was in place before the PUD change earlier this year. And the proposed subdivision also encompasses hillsize with slopes of 30% or more. And then again, within these hillsides, approximately 20 acres are forested. However, that could not be regulated if the PUD is removed. With that being said, though, the township's recommendation is to approve the removal. I feel it is the applicant's right to go back to the original zoning of the property, and that's also consistent with the state's, River View Estate subdivision. That's also straight zoning, as you continue on Ayers. The carriages was a PUD, but the other development back Ayers is AA zoning, and this style of development would be consistent with the existing style of development that's back there. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. We've also invited Gary Powell to attend the meeting as well, if you have any questions for him. And Gary, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, obviously, a township has limited zoning capabilities that's given to us by the revised code. And 519.021 covers the township's ability to apply a PUD on a piece of property. Just want to call out the second, the beginning of the second sentence of, well, I'll read the first and second, but the first sentence says, "The township zoning resolution or amendment adopted in accordance with this chapter may establish or modify planned unit developments. Planned unit development regulations shall apply to property only at the election of the property owner." And then there's more in that sentence, but, so, this is a strange request, and I just mean that it's strange because I don't think the zoning commission has seen this particular type of request before, where a property owner has applied for a PUD under 519.021, and now is coming back because of some reasons that are basically just asking that the PUD be removed from the property, and it would then return back to its original zoning, which is the AA residential. So, you know, it's, it's a different kind of request, but it, you know, it, once, if you approve this, it will just resort back to the zoning that was in place before the PUD was applied to the property. The same limitations on the developer would be in place, such as subdivision controls through Hamilton County, stormwater, things like that, hillside, all through Hamilton County, instead of having conditions being applied to the property through the PUD process like you did when you approved the PUD. So, I hope that all makes a little bit of sense, but if you have any questions throughout, just, you know, let me know.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Paul. Commission, did you have any questions? Mr. Guyer can start down at your end, if you'd like.
I don't have any questions. So there's been some work done out there. There's a little bit going on right now on the drive as well. I presume there's been nothing done that would have to be undone or would not fit regular, nor the standard zoning if this were to revert back?
Correct. That was my understanding, too, and the applicants here, and they're civil engineers here, too, but the original road was put in after the concept plan from regional planning was approved last year. So that's when the road was put in. That's also when some of the stormwater was put in. And that would have been the same for either the straight, they were going to use this standard-size subdivision street even in their PUD, because they had already put it in. Generally, in a PUD, this road can be more narrow than a standard subdivision street, but they were going to use the standard size. So yes, all of that was done after the original approval of the subdivision.
Okay, yeah, just so that there wasn't anything that is already done, that would be in violation of the zoning we're reverting back to.
And it's, right, and it's my understanding that no other clearing or earthwork has been done since the last PUD hearing.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
My question is, for Paul or Gary, is, just to, if we approve removal of the PUD, is the, is our PUD an overlay on top of the existing double-A zoning? So the double-A zoning is there, it's just reverting the?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
No questions either, Paul. Thank you very much. So we'll now take testimony from the audience who support the application, if there are any. Will the applicants representative? Every time, I even tried to avoid that exact thing tonight. It's right there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the zoning commission. Given the detailed explanation that Mr. Drury had given, our presentation will be short. A little bit of history, why we're here after all of this. There was a meeting about a month ago, maybe six weeks ago, attended by Mr. Powell, Mr. Drury, Ms. Donovan, and Vicky Earhart. And it, and all of us, too, plus Joe Farugia, Mike Zicka, and Ed Farugia, and Rich Arnold with McGill Smith Punchin. One of the things Ms. Earhart had mentioned is safety, the gate. And when, you know, and I think she made the comment, any of the three of you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought it was her, that even a minute delay on getting through that gate can mean life and death. So literally after we walked out of that meeting, Mr. Zicka said to me, "We have to rethink this. I don't want this to be a problem." And there was some discussion, I think, in that meeting. There's also a gate in one of your communities that Mr. Zicka told me just right out, you know, right before this meeting, that there are problems with that. There are periodic problems with that gate. And being the main entrance, we don't want to have that happen. There's also the issue of basically being able to control the development with, by the developer. There is the issue of the private water meter slash water pit. Cincinnati Water Works does not want to take control of that. So that was certainly an issue also. And plus, you know, I guess a collateral issue is the maintenance of the streets, so all, and also the limits of the clearing, being able to control that development internally, as opposed to having to come back and come back and come back. We've already been in front of you, I think this is the fourth time. So that's really kind of the history of this. We think it's a matter of right, as Mr. Powell had mentioned, you know, a matter of right to submit to a PUD. We think it's a matter of right to remove from a PUD, as complex as that has become because of this development. As Mr. Drury had indicated, the development is completely finished. There may be some minor additional clearing. Mr. Farugia or Mr. Arnold can tell you what protections there will be, if there is any, similar to what you have out there already. You know, Hamilton County Water and Sewer will have control over that. I know that they have engaged Dalton Witzik to, the geotechnical engineers, to look at it also, if there are going to be any geotechnical issues, if there's any additional clearing. So with that, if you have any questions, you know, again, either Mr. Farugia or Mr. Arnold, even Mr. Zicka can answer any or if you want to add anything.
Ed? Thank you. Real quick, can I have you step back up? I didn't have you state your name and address.
I'm sorry, that will help. I've only been in front of boards like this for 25 years. Rick Palo, Aaronoff, Rosen and Hunt, 425 Walnut, Suite 2200. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Edwin Farugia, Coldstream Estates Development, 7861 East Kemper Road, 45249. As Rick stated, the other factors making us remove the PUD, or wanting us to remove the PUD, pertain to the gate and the water main pit as well. But as Rick mentioned, if we did do additional clearing, we would take measures to make sure that the slope was sta, the slope was stable. Previously, when we were originally straight zoned as AA, after taking out trees, we were quick to put down silt fence and roll out seed and straw blankets, which helped get things vegetated extremely quickly. That was recommended by our geotech soils engineer, and that's how we would do it if we proceeded with any additional clearing.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission for the applicant? Yeah, I just have one question. So if there was to be additional clearing, can you give us some idea where that might take place?
It would take place essentially south of where the clearing, where the clearing limits were indicated on the PUD, or where they exist, right, where the clearing limits were located right now.
So essentially increasing the rear yard?
Correct.
Of the housing. Okay, thank you. No questions? Mr. Drury?
With that additional clearing, how much additional grading would be occurring? And would there be any retaining walls required?
No retaining walls would be required, and no, there would be no grading done outside of the building pads of where, we would not do any, and the grading that's on site right now would be the grading.
And then, you know, that additional clearing, would that expose more views to the river and adjacent properties?
That, it would increase the river view, yeah. Far enough away that I don't think you, the surrounding properties would be affected. They wouldn't be affected.
Thank you. I don't have any questions at this point. So now, I would like to open up the floor to testimony from those persons in the audience who support the application. If anyone is here to support the application, please step forward now. Yep. Seeing nobody in support, I'll now take testimony from those in opposition to the application. Please remember to state your name and address and affiliation to the project.
Hello, my name is Brad Smith. I live at 170 Asbury Road. That's the property that joins and is just down, directly downhill from the lots in question here. And I came and I spoke twice before, initially when the, for the PUD request for the carriages at Coldstream, and then also the views at Coldstream. And the concern was about clearing of vegetation, potential landslides on these steep slopes. So I'm here today in opposition to removing the PUD, because that will take away the undevelopable site that, the site as far as the no-clear zone and all of that. So part of what the reasons for removing the PUD is for additional clearing, so they have a view, better views of the property. So my ask would be that if you do approve to remove this PUD, that you could give some advice to the developers and the landowners with it going back to double-A, that's, of course, their right to do whatever they want with that property now. But coming down further on those steep slopes, especially if it's a clear cut, is going to make the already bad water runoffs that occurred with the initial clearing worse, and eventually, you know, most likely leading to landslides. And after that would come lawsuits pitting Anderson Township residents against each other for lawsuits. So requests would be is, when they clear, is just to maybe do some select cut or to top trees, instead of coming through and clear cutting, like, which had been done to start with, that did cause some water problems.
Thank you very much. Do we have any additional audience members who'd like to speak in opposition to the application?
Mr. Henson, I have a question for Mr. Smith.
By all means.
Please come back. So could you tell, so you're on 170 Asbury, but I assume you're in one of these houses that's off that pretty narrow road that comes east. Where is your house relative to this, like, these lots are?
Okay, that's, yeah, that's Cardinal Terrace, which are those six homes that come in off of Asbury.
Yeah.
Mine is the one that is adjoining to the property of Lot 7 to the north, in that corner.
So is it like here?
Nope, around the other side.
Tell me when I'm getting off here?
Up, up, that, that's it, that property, yes. Correct. Mm-hmm. And that's in, that's, you know, at the downhill of that.
Yeah.
That's deep slope as it comes all the way around.
Yeah, there's some big-time slopes back there, for sure. That's all I wondered, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm not opposed to, we live there for the views, and it's great. And when they did clear, I could see where they do need to clear more, but I hope they will be prudent about not clear cutting and just select cutting.
Yeah, sorry, Brian. Does the applicant want to respond? By all means. Any other questions from the commission at this time?
Yes, I have more. So maybe for Mr. Farugia, or Mr. Arnold, perhaps. So if you do, so we saw where Mr. Smith's house is, and I've heard some comment about clearing so you can see the river views better. Do you, I'll ask Mr. Arnold, do you have any idea at this point where the clearing would occur relative to his house? And because just looking at it, it doesn't look like his house, clearing towards his house would be what you would need to do to see the river better. It is? Mr. Smith said it is, but I want to, I was wondering what Mr. Arnold said, if he knows. He may not know at this point.
The zoning commission, Richard Arnold, McGill Smith Punchin, 4700 Park 42 Drive, Suite 190B, Cincinnati, Ohio. We currently do not know exactly where we'd be clearing at this point, because we haven't done a plot plan for that particular home site. And these trees are going to be cleared on a case-by-case basis, in that, you know, if there's any dead ones, we're going to take them down. If there's any that are invasive, we'll probably take those down, and then we take a look and see how, how the view is from the home as it's constructed, and, and that, I mean, that's going to be our approach. As far as drainage is concerned, as soon as, as soon as we clear, we're going to be putting down vegetation to control the rate of runoff and, and protect the downstream properties, mitigate their concerns.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing no further comments or questions, and if there is no objection from the commission, I'll close this public hearing on Case 12022 PUD Views of Coldstream. So the hearing is actually closed at this point. If you'd like to stick around, by all means, and otherwise, we'll take this up for consideration now or tonight, based on the commission's.
I mean, you know, looking at all the different iterations that we've seen, and the base zoning being AA, the PUD did exercise some restraint as far as the amount of clearing, which I think, you know, was good for the township and to find sort of some issues that were brought up in previous meetings and then lots meeting. But again, the underlying district is AA. Based on council's, you know, comments, you know, was something that we need to consider as far as the owner's rights. So that's my thoughts of tonight. I think we could go forward if the other commission members feel like we could.
Thank you, Mr. Gothard. Mr. Eliff, did you have any?
Yes, I think we should definitely go forward tonight. I don't see any, there's any reason necessarily to delay that. I heard Mr. Arnold say that they're not going to know precisely where the clearing limits are. However, when you look at the topography there, it's, and if you've been out to it, which I think everybody has, it drops off pretty substantially. And I think that the county subdivision regulations, although their oversight would not be as close to it as this board's, we've all seen some of these cases come back for clearing modifications. I do have some sympathy for Mr. Smith, for sure, and the unknown about that, but I think there's a decent amount of separation there. Yeah, sometimes during construction, you will see runoff as the stormwater facilities are incomplete. Sometimes that does happen, and it's disruptive, but when the stormwater facilities are
Sometimes that does happen, and it's disruptive, but when the stormwater facilities are completed, if they're not by now, they will be designed to regulate the runoff at the same velocity and flow as exists today. So, and I do take note of Mr. Powell's remarks of the kind of interesting language of the PUD, of it is at the request of the property owner typically, so I think we would need to be mindful of that.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with moving forward. I think, like the other commissioners said, did provide some good additional conditions, but none of that's been exercised yet, so I think moving forward is fine. And concerns with construction runoff should be mitigated with proper construction techniques with silt fence and other precautions, and if they're not, then there's means to file complaints against the contractor to make sure that there is no construction runoff during that time. So, I think those can be, there's means in place to help control that as well.
Mr. Guyer? Yeah, I don't have much to add either. You know, on one hand, it is also interesting, you know, almost serendipitous that you guys chose to go with a public road, basically engineered a public road to begin with, so that's kind of some good luck, but I don't have much more to add either, if anyone wants to make a motion or continue discussion.
I will move to approve Case 1-2022 PUD removal.
I'll second your motion. And this, sorry, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Members of the commission, thank you.
Thank you.
See you next month.
Paul, do we have an additional business tonight?
We do not. So, I'm not sure about next month yet, but if you'll just hold the date.
It's the 22nd.
22nd of August.
All right, I'll make a motion to...
And we'll let you know once the deadline passes if we'll have a meeting.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
So, moved.
I. Thank you all.